I'd like to call to order the special town council meeting for February 2nd. Shall we rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Brian Blazek.
Present.
Paul Panzik.
Here.
Wayne Pondinas.
Present.
Mike Schilling.
Here.
Jerry Swatz, present. Beth Hernandez, absent. David Westlin.
Present.
Okay. We have a quorum. We have no minutes to approve, so I will go on to new business 5A, update on the town manager. We have determined to ask Tom DiGiulio to assist us in doing a search for the town manager, and he is going to work with the town council to help us in the search. So I would like a motion to approve hiring Tom DiGiulio at a rate of $150 per hour to help us with that search.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments? Is it all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It is approved 5 to 0. Item B, discuss repairs to 85th Street. Paul, I'm gonna turn this one over to you.
So, there's a few things happening on 85th, and we're talking about the section between Alexander and Lake Hills Drive. The road is in somewhat rough shape, but what's making it worse is a drainage issue on the south side of 85th near Fairway. So, it's been an issue for a while. I talked to Bob Davis about it. He said that it's not the first time it's come up, and that they'd already actually looked into an improvement of adding, connecting a storm drain to that low spot, so it takes away the water. Eventually, the road needs to be repaved, and we're also working on plans with Sheraville and County to work all three municipalities together to redo that road. But either way, that water needs to be drained off, or the road will keep rutting. So, Bob went ahead and got an estimate. It's just under $7,000. It's $6,000 and change to install a drain and divert all that water, so at least it will prevent further damage, and also help when the road is repaved to preserve the viability of the pavement. So, he recommends it be done. I know that Wayne and Brian participated in a meeting also where this was discussed, and it seemed that all, our town engineer as well as Bob Davis and all parties recommend that we move forward and approve that for Bob Davis.
Questions or comments?
Basically, I guess, the only summary out of the meeting that's important here is the fact that everybody in attendance, the county and Sheraville, agreed with St. John to go along with the paving project in the future, whenever it's decided to move ahead with it. Other than that, Wayne, was there anything else you remember that we did?
They suggest using a grant, trying to get the grant, and that work probably won't get done until next year.
Correct.
But there's three parties involved, like was said, the county, Sheraville, and St. John. St. John is supposed to lead, be the leader on that, and I think that, like you said, it was $7,000 to try and take care of that drainage. That's, we already got a request to purchase for that. It hasn't been brought forward to us, and my concern was, let's not fix it until we find out what we have going on. So, we've had that meeting with all three parties, and I think it's okay to go ahead and do that, just a little under $7,000 project, and then next year, we know what we have to do, but we have to apply for the grant. They recommend that, doing that first.
Okay. So then, is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve, and I don't have the request to purchase in front of me, so I'm gonna do it this way, because we all had it and have witnessed it, it's just, I don't happen to have the figure right in front of me. So, I will make the motion to approve the request to purchase not to exceed $7,000 for the drainage improvement on the south side of 85th between Fairway and Alexander, and that estimate is in the possession of Bob Davis.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It is approved 5 to 0. Item C is to disclose, present, and discuss the potential settlement agreement options concerning the St. John LBL and BLB, which is regarding the Gates East, and also the Oak Ridge development that is on the corner of White Oak and 109th. So, Paul, I will turn this over to you, since you worked on this wonderful PowerPoint for us.
Mr. President, would you like me to step to the podium for the presentation? Because what I'd like to do is verbally walk through these slides and basically talk through them. I'm not sure if you'd rather me do it out there or back here.
Whatever's convenient for you. It's, I think it's fine where you're at, but...
Okay. So, I'm gonna go through this presentation, and we prepared this to help to communicate what's happening as far as the town and its legal disputes concerning the town and BLB development and LBL development. So, I'll basically talk through the slides. We'd like residents to provide their input, feedback, if they have any. I will preface this and say that we have been working on this all year, and finally reached a point where we thought it was something worthy of bringing out to the public, and we hope that if we disclose everything to the public, all the details and all the facts, that they would support it as well. So, I'll begin, it's in a summary fashion, and I've kinda gone back to 2018, and I'm gonna step forward from 2018 to 2021. There's some important background information that everyone needs to understand about what has happened and what could happen. So, back in 2018, BLB alleged that St. John had improperly connected a newly-built sanitary lift station number one to a 24-inch sanitary line serving the Gates area, and they seeked $3 million in compensation. And, let me also say, this is all very summarized, so I'm just trying to cover it briefly. The sanitary line is bound by a recapture agreement to reimburse the developer who financed the installation. This reimbursement is captured from an area served by the sanitary line. The new connection serves homes in areas outside of the recapture agreement map. Because of that, the developer could not capture any of the repayment for those extra homes and made that claim. St. John denied wrongdoing in that case. So that, the other dispute that BLB brought to the town, at the same time, in tandem with the sanitary dispute, BLB also claimed entitlement to 1,615 units in the Gates, and that is reached by calculating 2.3 units per 702 acres, instead of the 1,450 units specified in Section 7 of the 2005 Gates Annexation Agreement. So, if you're, if anyone's watching or sees, or has a copy of the presentation, Section 7 is printed here, and it simply states, "The project density taken as a whole, but excluding Pod 18, shall not exceed 1,450 units or exceed a global residential density of 2.3 units per acre based on the total acreage of 702 acres." That's enough to get the point across. So, if you do 2.3 times 702, the number's different. It comes out to 1,615. So, this loophole or discrepancy was created back in 2005 in the annexation agreement, and it was something that was brought forward for dispute, that they claimed they can get more units because of this statement. So, we had two issues we were fighting. BLB and St. John in 2019 form a settlement agreement in effort to resolve the dispute concerning the alleged improper sanitary connection. Two major points of compensation granted within the settlement entitle special zoning for a new development, East Gates. East Gates was comprised of 108 acres within St. John and was rezoned to grant R2 PUD zoning with 11,200 square foot lot size average. Additionally, 111 acres outside of St. John were to be annexed on January 1st, 2020, at R2 PUD zoning with the same 11,200 square foot average. There's a picture of East Gates, a slide that shows the entire development. The highlighted area in orange, East Gates, 108 acres within St. John, granted R2 PUD zoning with 11,200 square foot size and no specified minimum lot width or depth. This change was finalized in 2019. The lots vary in width from 53-foot wide to 60-foot wide. Homes are currently being sold and built on the area. So, the area in orange is already approved. It was approved before 2020. It cannot be changed. It was not a part of the disputes in 2020 with LBL, BLB. So, understanding that is important. The next slide will show you the other areas. The highlighted areas on this slide are the East Gates, 111 acres outside of St. John to be annexed on January 1st, 2020, at R2 PUD zoning with the 11,200 square foot average. So, those two areas had not been platted yet. Besides the East Gates approval, those were, that was a major point of compensation in the 2019 settlement. Additionally, there was a deal struck over the density of the original Gates of St. John. So, I'll read this verbiage. "The 2019 settlement agreement also resolved the Gates density dispute granting entitlement for 1,650 units in the Gates instead of the 1,450 units specified in Section 7 of the annexation agreement. In addition, the agreement specifies the additional units will be located within Pod 17, which originally contained 77 units, and is excluded from height limitation or owner occupancy requirements. Pod 17 could have 242 units per the 2019 agreement." So, on this slide, you'll see some white boxes. The one on the left, again, is an excerpt from the annexation agreement that showed the original amount of units, it was 1,450. On the bottom, you see a red arrow pointing to the 77. That was what was supposed to be in Pod 17, was 77 units. It was zoned R4. It was to be condos, those 77 units. Additionally, on the right side, you'll see two white boxes. You'll see number 10, that none of the dwelling units erected in Pods 1 through 15 shall be greater than two stories in height, meaning Pod 17 had no height restriction. And item 15, that not less than 100% of each group of residential units erected in Pods 1 through 15 shall be sold to owner occupants, meaning Pod 17 was exempt from the owner The 2019 settlement agreement also resolves the Gates density dispute granting entitlement for the 1,615 units in the Gates instead of the 1,450. In addition, the agreement specifies the additional units would be located in Pod 17, which originally contained 77 units, and is excluded from height limitation or owner occupancy requirements. And the white box is an excerpt from the 2019 settlement agreement. So, what we have, what we had in 2020 to begin our year essentially is 242 units approved in Pod 17, meaning we would have two apartment buildings, towers in fact, of any height possible. So, the 2019 settlement agreement would provide for that. Now, we're moving from 2019 into 2020 and revisiting the East Gates, 111 acres outside of St. John to be annexed. On January 1st, 2020, St. John initiated a process to clarify the zoning of the 111 acres of annexed land to R1. Per Ordinance 24-42, all annexed land must be R1 unless a unanimous vote for other. The vote in 2019 was not unanimous. In 2019, another annexation unrelated to the settlement agreement granted R2 PUD zoning with entitlements of 65-foot wide by 135-foot deep lots on 40 acres outside of St. John, effective January 1st, 2020. There's a picture on the slide that is the 40 acres formerly known as the Arzemanian property. It's at White Oak and 109th. On January 1st, 2020, St. John initiated a process to clarify the zoning of the 40 acres annexed land to R1 in the same, for the same reasons of the other one. So, it was not voted unanimously, and our code says it should not, it should be R1. So, on this next slide, it shows, on the left side, you have the annexed parcels of East Gates. On the right side, you have the annexed R1. St. John and LBL, BLB began a new dispute over validity of the annexation at R2 PUD. In June of 2020, Lake County Court ruled in favor of St. John and supports Ordinance 24-42. Afterward, LBL, BLB appealed the decision, and I can't see the rest of the slide. Can you make that visible, Jason? St. John also challenges the validity of the 2019 settlement agreement as a whole. So, the local court decision in favor of St. John in 2020 states the annexed parcels are, in fact, R1. The decision was appealed by LBL, and the case is currently awaiting judgment at appellate court. In the interim, LBL was denied primary plat approval on the 40-acre annexed parcel because the plat did not meet R1 zoning requirements. LBL initiated another court action versus St. John Plan Commission, again claiming the land is R2 PUD and contesting the R1 zoning classification. "The outcome of the appellate court decision may result in many different outcomes for the multiple disputes. If the decision supports St. John and the annexed land is R1, there is still uncertainty regarding the validity of the settlement agreement overall and the sanitary dispute," which initially started everything, "and the Gates density dispute resolved within the settlement agreement. St. John has anticipated multiple scenarios and the potential arguments related to the sanitary dispute and Gates density dispute. We are confident in our positions for each. However, outcomes can never be guaranteed or certain." Isn't that right, Dave? "In September 2020, both parties agreed to begin negotiations for the purpose of seeking acceptable resolution for the multiple disputes. Over the months since, many different proposals have been presented by both parties. Some components acceptable, many rejected as unacceptable. Negotiation continued and terms were refined, however, an agreement could not be finalized to the satisfaction of both parties. Recently, a new, a potential new settlement agreement with two distinct options for settling the multiple disputes was made. Both parties agree that two options within the proposal are worthy of consideration. The St. John Town Council wishes to disclose details to the residents of St. John before official consideration of either option. The first option resolves all disputes," meaning it would resolve the sanitary interceptor and the Gates density dispute, "and the zoning dispute in East Gates, but it would not resolve the dispute in the 40 acres at White Oak and 109th. The second option is identical to the first, however additionally resolves the zoning dispute related to the 40-acre parcel at White Oak and 109th." So, if you have a view of the screen, and copies could be had of this at Town Hall, by the way, if anybody's out there watching on live stream, this is actually verbatim the settlement option. What you see here is what we have, and what has been worked on since September. And there's a lot of bullets. I'm going to not read every character in here. I'm going to try to read a summary of this. Number one, LBL will demand builder to use hardy board on all units east of Klein. A decrease of 3.1 million in LBL's contract with the builder buyers. That means no vinyl siding. So, one of our main concerns is the council isn't preserving property values in town. I just want to stop and say that. This is not in the slide, but it's important. It was one of the concerns about, you know, developments over the years. So, that's always a guiding principle. So, the no vinyl siding, hardy board only is number one. Number two, LBL will develop the East Gates 111-acre annex portion with a minimum lot width of 60-foot. This area previously had lots that were 43-foot and 53-foot wide. Number three, LBL will donate to the town a 6.5-acre park east of Klein, the northwest corner of East Gates. Number four, LBL will donate to the town a 7.6-acre park east of Klein. That's on the northeast side of the Gates East. Number five, Pod 17 of the Gates of St. John is currently entitled for 242 units to be built and apartment towers without architectural restrictions. BLB will instead limit Pod 17 to a maximum of 120 owner-occupied row homes with hardy boards, smart side siding on property, well, on the, in the Pod 17. I don't need to read the parcel numbers to you. So, for anyone who's wondering what row home is, I would recommend you look in Crown Point, at the intersection of North Street and Indiana, there's some row homes that are new going up there. Number six, St. John shall amend the sewer contract to reflect the start date and costs incurred on this 36-inch interceptor line effective through August 1, 2024. And actually, that date might be incorrect. I got some information today, so that will probably be changed, but inconsequential to tonight's presentation. Doing so represents the maximum time period allowed under Indiana statute. So, we're working with the developer to ensure that he's reimbursed by law, per the law, for the investment he made, paying for the 36-inch sewer interceptor at Sheraville. Number seven, St. John expands the 24-inch interceptor line recapture area to include all new construction units going into Lift Station 1 and any other new subdivision that feeds into the 24-inch interceptor. Engineers to figure out actual area. This expansion of the recapture area shall be effective through January 15, 2022, which is 15 years from the date of acceptance, and represents the maximum time allowed by law. So, as you may recall from the first slide, the 24-inch interceptor with Lift Station 1 feeding into it was what kicked off all the disputes. So, we're ensuring that the developer's compensated fairly by law for what he alleges he should be. We had a different position on this, but as part of the settlement, we're opening the recapture area to what the engineers deem is going into the pipe currently. Number 11, LBL will work with NIPSCO to use their credits to bring three-phase power to well numbers eight and nine that would cost the town $300,000 plus just for well eight.
I missed number eight.
Oh, did I?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me back up a little bit. So, we had talked about the sewer recaptures. My page is cut off. So, I finished number six and seven. Those were regarding the recaptures.
Yep.
Number eight, St. John will waive and give up $400,000 BLB requirement for the fire station in the Gates of St. John, and the fire station land will be conveyed from the town back to BLB, and the town will entitle three more duplex similar to those that are already all along that block. So, essentially, they would finish out that block with what's already on it, just be three additional ones where the fire station, where the 2005 fire station location had been picked. We're gonna visit that topic later again, so to answer that question better. Number nine, LBL will work with the town to make sure they get their water lines in before the roads are in, in order to avoid having to pay for costly restoration. LBL has already completed this work in good faith. Number 10, LBL will install the dirtwork for well site eight. That would cost the town $100,000 plus. Number 11, LBL will work with NIPSCO to use their credits to bring three-phase power to well numbers eight and nine. That would cost the town $300,000 plus just for well eight. LBL is already working on this in good faith, but cannot make any promises. LBL will plat well eight sooner than is scheduled in the plating process if the town requests and grant necessary restrictive easement around the wellhead area. Number 13, LBL will donate the town the property for well number nine and restrictive easement around the wellhead, currently planned for five lots, when the town is ready to improve the site. This well was just tested and is producing 1,200 gallons a minute. Number 14, LBL will have Mad Bomber fireworks put on a large fireworks display this year for the town, assume at the baseball field, similar to what was canceled last year. Number 15, the sanitary interceptor dispute is settled. Number 16, the Gates of St. John 2005 annexation agreement. Item number seven, Gates density dispute settled. Number 17, St. John maintains stance that 40-acre Arzemanian parcel at 109th and White Oak is R1. The zoning dispute on that particular land is not settled. All other disputes are settled, including the zoning disputes in East Gates. So, I'm gonna pause there for a moment. So, that's option number one for settlement. It settles everything that we have legal disputes over. Our goal was to take what was given to us and make everything a little bit better. We weren't handed a clean slate. Anyone who's talked to me personally will know that our goal in town is larger lots, larger home values, larger homes, R1 as, you know, for the most part. This wasn't a clean slate development. This wasn't a developer walking in and saying, "I'm gonna start from scratch." This was something that was handed over from the past into 2020. We received it. We wanted to do what was best for the residents in town and make it as good as we can make it. So, I'll just review a few points. The East Gates, a large portion of it is already approved. We couldn't change it. The annex portion, we were able to change. We have 60-foot wide minimum lots instead of potentially 53s. Well, there were 53s and potentially 43s. I will add, this is not in the slide, but a discussion was had today, and we've also put a minimum depth on the 111 acres, that at least 90% of the lots will be 140 feet deep. So, that was negotiated out today and will be in the, written in the agreement. And the reason I say 90% is because there's a couple lots that are just short of it, so we capped it at that number to make sure that the plat cannot be changed or adjusted or there be no surprises. Okay? So, again, 60-foot wide lots, 140 deep for most of them. It's better than what was given to us, certainly, far better, and there's stipulations keeping it that way. The sanitary disputes are resolved, and this is an important point, one of the most important points. That Pod 17, you would've had two apartment towers with 242 units. We now have owner-occupied row homes that will be nothing over like three stories or whatever they, how they work. But I think, I think they're three stories tops. I think they're usually two or three. Similar to what you've seen in Crown Point. So, that is definitely a move in the right direction, going from 242 to 120, moving to owner-occupied, moving to a row home that Mr. Lawton estimates a value of $300,000 minimum on each row home unit. So, what we were, what we began with and what we currently have now, there's a pretty big difference, and we've not taken any steps backwards, and we've also solved our legal disputes. And one other point of clarification for residents, the recapture agreements and allowing the developer to recapture what he's legally entitled to and supposed to recapture, that's new permit, new building permit fees. So, currently, new building permits already have that on there. They're just gonna go back and recheck the numbers and make sure the numbers are right, and that permit fee continues as long as it's supposed to by law. So, it's not a new... So it's not a new tax or anything that existing residents would have to pay. Now. One more thing about settlement option number one. The fire station was mentioned, and I know there'd be questions about that. So I'm going to read a slide and then I'm going to actually turn it over to Mikey for a moment. So regarding a potential second fire station in Southern Saint John, mentioned in this agreement. According to professional fire service personnel, including our current fire chief. A southern station should be located close to the center of town along U S two thirty-one slash one hundred and ninth, near or west of U S forty-one. Additionally, it is preferred a fire station not be located in the subdivision. So on the screen you'll see a, a snapshot out of G I S with, shows the western town boundary is the state line. Eastern town boundary is where Green Acres began. The center of town is probably about a half a mile west of U S forty-one where the, where the creek goes through. That's about smack dab in the middle of that, that highway. Probably be about the ideal place for a fire station, maybe even a little over bump. Again, I'm going to turn it over to Mikey, but I'm just showing you what's on the map. I kind of drew a circle around that center of town, and you'll see this other arrow pointing to the little blue dot in the gates where the two thousand and five planned fire station was. Well, that, there wasn't any, you know, a lot of this development wasn't on the southwest side of the town. But keep in mind, our town can't go any further east. Once you hit Green Acres, you hit Crown Point, unincorporated. We will go all the way to the state line and we will continue to go southwest down Calumet by shoe corner. So the, the center of town is, is somewhat of a target. Anyway, I'm, I'm going to turn it over to Mike. Talk to about, talk to us about fire service.
There you go, talk about it. One thing when we do, you know, pick our second fire station, you know, you have to look at potential growth. And our existing area, you know, on, on the west end, we already go out to state line. We do protect areas unincorporated, Saint John Township. And even when they put the gates station in there. It always should have been on the west side of town. Even our own fire chief at the time and our current fire chief believe that the most ideal spot is the, the southwest part of town. And with it being on the southwest part of town on two thirty-one, you're not going to go out onto a, through a subdivision. As it is in the gates, you, every time you'd have an emergency call and it was not in that subdivision, which would probably be about eighty percent of the calls coming out of a, a station. You'd have to drive through a subdivision to get to a main street to take your emergency vehicle. You don't want to be emergency vehicling through homes, kids. And that's why you want it on a main street, one thing. And then if it goes on the west side, when you're going to the gates, the railroad issue is solved because there's viadocks there. So there, there's no chance of, you know, everybody is always worried about railroad tracks. Well, if you put the station on two thirty-one, if you had a call into the gates and a train was going by, they all go overhead. And there's no obstruction by a train. You know, both of those, the C S X and the North Fork Southern crossings. So. That's all I have on that.
Thanks, Mike. So in essence, even if we had that land, it, it, it's not smart to build it there. It's not what the fire service wants or, you know, sees fit.
One other thing is even the second station, it's still probably five years off in planning anyways, you know, because one thing when you, when you build a fire station. And as we're all city planners here, you have to be able to staff the fire station. It's easy to build a fire station. We have plenty of equipment. The fire station is relatively cheap and it's a one-time expense. The expense comes in, in staffing the fire department. And with a station, adequate staffing would be about fifteen personnel. And that's your biggest challenge and right now that, that would be. Five years before we had the, the capital to even put men in that fire station. You know.
Thanks, Mike. So in light of what the, both fire chiefs and, and the professionals instructed us, we were able to relieve the developer that duty. And in exchange, get rid of apartment buildings, go to row homes, you know, help all these other disputes. And anyway, there's other opportunities for a fire station. We, we will work with the, either find a land ourselves or work with other developers, but there'll be a little bit more on that a little bit later in this presentation. So option one, we had everything settled except that forty acre parcel on one hundred and nineteenth, one hundred and ninth and White Oak. So settlement option two. Is on the screen now. Option two contains all contents of option one. Except item seventeen. So what item seventeen was, that was the one that said, this isn't fully dissolved or just solved. We still had the dispute. So option two solves that final dispute over the forty acres, contains everything in option one. And how option two resolves that. Is a, a land swap essentially. So L B L had that forty acre parcel on White Oak one hundred and ninth. They were going to put up six foot wide lots and put homes there, south of Heartland Park. So instead in this option, L B L donates to Saint John forty acres of White Oak, on White Oak and one hundred and ninth. Recent appraisal undeveloped as two point five million. Zoning dispute is settled on these parcels. So the forty acre parcel is donated, it would be for a future generations, you know, future to explore for Heartland Park. Expansion significant for whatever is deemed necessary out there. The other item, in exchange for that, Saint John allows an R two P U D zoning, but it's very different than the R two P U D zoning you've seen before. R two P U D zoning to new property instead of the White Oak project. Before I go any further, I'm going to step outside of the slide. P U D, what does it mean? R two P U D, all this. P U D is a planned unit development, and what it essentially means is. It's like a customized zoning. So you step out of the book for a minute and both parties negotiate and figure out what works best for the town. What'll maintain property values, what's good, what's bad. There's nothing inherently wrong with the P U D unless you let your guard down and. Allow P U Ds that really don't help your town or your property values. So please understand that. So you could have two R two P U Ds and they're completely different animals. Everyone is forged as a separate and new custom design. So that, that's important for everyone to understand who's not into zoning, who's not a zoning geek like me. So Saint John allows R two P U D zoning to new property instead of the White Oak project. That means a new piece of property will be granted R two P U D. This new project will consist of one hundred and sixty acres total. Consisting of the Lake Central and Saint George Serbian Church property, which I will show you in just a moment. This would have to be done prior to the donation of the forty acres. This will allow for similar economic benefits to L B L as what is being given up on the forty acres donated to the town. All one hundred and sixty acres will meet standard R two requirements for home minimum square foot size and side yards. And have a new H O A independent of any other development. A sixty acre portion will have lots with minimum width of seventy foot, minimum depth of one hundred and forty foot, smart siding, no vinyl siding. I'm going to stop there for a moment and remind you on the White Oak project, it was sixty-five foot wide, one thirty-five deep. So we've stepped up the width and, and length of those lots that he's getting his replacement property. Additionally, a one hundred acre portion of the one sixty will have lots with a minimum width of eighty foot, minimum depth of one forty foot with eight foot side yards. So eighty by one forty with eight foot side yards is similar to what the, the current plan commission just approved in Greystone. It's the exact same specifications. And, and by the way, this entire new development will have eight foot side yards, whereas the White Oak development had the smaller six foot side yards. So that's important to note that both the side yards and lot width and lot depth have all improved. Additionally, the one hundred acre portion that has the eighty by one forty minimum lots will have architectural standards of no vinyl siding. Ranch minimum nineteen hundred square foot, one and a half story minimum twenty-two fifty and two story minimum twenty-four hundred. So these are the same minimum square foot that's called for in our R two. So there's, they're not getting a cut on that as previous. So they'll be up to, up to spec on all the square foot of the, the homes. Three car attached garage encouraged, overhead garage doors must contain glass. Twenty-five percent brick or stone front exterior excluding dormers. Roof pitch minimum six twelve. No bi level, tri level or quad level homes. Any fencing must be wrought iron style and requires individual approval. No PVC or wood fencing, only in-ground pools allowed. So these standards are mirror imaged from the recent plan commission. Favorable approval of a Greystone development here in town. So it was a goal of mine to get these standards up to that, and this didn't happen in one meeting, I could just tell you that. So it was a goal of mine to at least meet the specifications of what our current stringent plan commission would approve. To put in this. So, and I know the plan commission was behind that project because it had the architectural standards. Next slide, please. So now on the slide you see the picture. On the left side you see the future Heartland Park expansion, which could be had in exchange for what you see on the right. This property is east of Blaine, south of ninety-third, north of one hundred and first Joliet. There are no other subdivisions adjacent except for directly south of this is the East Gates, oddly enough. However, the East Gates has those sixty foot wide lots that we negotiated up. This would have seventies and eighties. All one hundred and forty minimum depth. So what you have. Oh, Jason's bringing up a slide that shows the general, yeah, the blue area, the, that area, that area, and then there's a parcel to the right. There you go, that area. So you have grouse point to the left, you have Tiburon kind of up to the north, but this subdivision wouldn't touch either one of them actually. And Tiburon and grouse point both have eighty foot lots, some nineties, you know, some that are a few, a few that are larger. But essentially this, the eighty by one forty would be similar to what's around it and bigger than what's in East Gates. Jason, could you go back to the other slide, please? So there's a pipeline running through that property. So the portion to the south is the sixty acres that has a seventy by one forty. And that's essentially a little bit higher, that whole like area, right? That whole area. So not that, but like you see that line cutting through, that's the pipeline. So everything south of that line where the arrow is, that would be the sixty acres at seventy by one forty. That's essentially replacing this White Oak project, but in a little better fashion. And the portion to the north where the two arrows point to, those two sections would be the eighty by one forty with the architectural standards. It has the creek running through there, there's green space, there's open space, it's a little bit of, it's not a grid pattern. It's, there's a far more green space between all these lots. In fact, with the pipeline between there, you're going to have a lot of space between those, those rows of homes. So this is option two is to add this into it and get the land swap, get the land for softball, baseball fields well into the future. Probably serve the rest of, you know, Saint John generations with that. One other deciding factor, and it really can't be overlooked. You see on the right side, I, I wrote there, Shererville town limit. The Sherivale's right there. And their R one lot size is eighty by one twenty-five. So at some point, this land could be annexed in the Sherivale and eighty by one twenty-fives are built. Or we do this now and get eighty by one forty and throw the architectural standards on it to make sure we keep up our property values. So one way or another, it's probably going to get built. So the land adjacent to it is the Christmas tree farm. So if Jason wants to go back to G I S, because he's pretty good at that. If you back out a little bit, you, it will show you the municipal boundaries. Maybe not, stop right there. There it is. So see that purple? That's, that's Sherivale, that purple that he's pointing at. So Sherivale's almost right next to it. There's only one or two parcel, little skinny parcels between the Saint George parcel, which you have your arrow on right now. So, yeah, so that, that Sherivale's right knocking on our door at this point. So, so that could be a factor too, i- if, if we chose not to do something with it. Sherivale might grab it and do the eighty by one twenty-fives or even something lesser. I know the Christmas tree farm has a lot of smaller lots. It's owned by Australians, I don't know what they're doing with it, they bought it all, but, and they got the zoning, you just haven't seen anything happen there yet. So that is kind of one that's going to flip to Saint John or Sherivale. If we were to control it like this, we would end up with better, more expensive property values. And conserve the property value better than it likely would if it flipped to Sherivale. So it's a factor. I'm done. I don't know if anyone has any questions, you know. First of all, from the council, I'll turn back over to the president. Maybe you want to open the floor if any public has any questions or comments, anything?
Yeah, I'll get to that. I, I do have a question first. Has there any been any discussion about adding some bike paths or trails tying these two other parts of town?
There has. So if, if we could bring up an East Gates slide. Currently, you know, can you go back to the slide that actually had the plat on it where I had coloring? Thanks, Jason. There's one, okay. So currently there's a bike path that runs along one hundred and fifth and then turns north and runs up to Nipco easement all the way to Joliet. There's two, there's two potential additions that have been talked about, but nothing's been baked into any plans. One would be to, to have that trail continued through that new development, that would probably be the most logical thing. So if you were to go up to that new development, the Nipco easement crosses it. And, and get it to Sherivale, right? So there's the Nipco, you can actually see it on that, on that G I S, that's the Nipco easement. So it continues kind of through there. I, I don't know what kind of land rights he would have for his portion because he doesn't own that land. So that would be one potential. The other potential connection would be to, and this one is a little more minor. Would be to connect it from the existing new soccer field parking lot and to come through. So that area, Jason, on the northeast, I'm sorry, northwest corner, that, just to the right of your arrow. Nope, down. I wish I could touch this, nope. There's like a little parcel right on, that's it, click it. That's the donated park. So that, as well as the lot that connects to the cul-de-sac is the donated park. So you could also bring the bike trail in from that parking lot and come through and loop it so it hits the other bike trail. So that one's probably less important because the main thing we want to do is get it out to Sherivale.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
So there's been discussion, but no, no commitment as of yet?
Okay. Any questions, Mike?
And option two, there's no mention of any parks.
What?
Any parks. Has that been brought up or?
It, it can be, it's, it's not a problem. There's, there's green space in there to certainly put a park. So we could, we could visit that. I'm sure they could find a, a place for a playground equipment. So that's, that could be probably easily done.
And then in option one, it shows a four point five acre park east of Klein. And then on, on item four, they're going to donate nine point five acres, but there's no parcel numbers.
Okay, I think you're looking at an older one, it's been changed since then.
All right, yeah.
So the other parcel is really not a, a very attractive parcel. So the parcel Jason clicked on is a good one, and it has that other lot that connects to the cul-de-sac. So if you were in the subdivision, you can get right to the park. Now, the, the, the second park you're talking about is actually, it's in this presentation I just gave tonight, I think it's seven point six acres. And it is, oop. No, go back to where you were, Jason, you were good. It is over to the right, just to the right a little bit more, Jason, there's that weird, hit it right there. That portion, a portion of that, which I don't really see much use for the town for that. He has extra land, there's a pipeline going through there, he can only use like the southern portion of it. So he was going to donate aid it to us. Now, I'm not sure what we could use it for. That's something we could discuss, but I didn't ask for that, it was just provided. The two parks were, were provided. And I should say we didn't, just for the public edification, Wayne and I actually led the negotiations in this. So Wayne and I were instrument, like the, basically, leading the way with this. So I took care of more of the, some of the zoning stuff, but Wayne and I had a lot of meetings, a lot of conference calls. So I appreciate that help. I think we worked together pretty good on that.
Brian, any questions? Brian, any questions?
Basically, all I'd like to say is Paul and Wayne did a bang up job. Paul, uh, Paul really, really put in his, in the time and work. And he and Wayne handled the discussions and they've done a really, really fine job looking at, uh, just what they've presented. It's a very difficult subject to understand for the general public. However, they've tried to do their best to let you understand what's being discussed and what our plans are going forward and how best we can settle this matter with the least impact to the town and the best for the residents' property values.
So speaking of that and the timeframes, I think our goal, our goal for this evening is to get this information out here. So, and hopefully to solicit some comments, some suggestions. Um, so we'll be looking at, hopefully unless our attorney wants us to do something sooner, make a decision at our February 24th Town Council meeting on which of these settlements to accept. And so for the public, you've got a couple of weeks out there to email, send a letter, um, whatever, you know, if you've got some thoughts and ideas. Um, we're going to continue to accumulate those and look at them. We'll share them out with everybody. Um, so we will know what everybody's thoughts and ideas are. Um, so that's kind of the timeframe that I'm looking at. Does that fit into what we're talking about, Paul?
It does. And if I may expand your comment a little bit. Please feel free to call, uh, email us, give me your phone number, call me, call Wayne, call Mikey, call Jerry, call Brian. Two-way dialogue. Don't just drop a comment for a public comment on Town Council Meeting. We're a little more approachable than that. Actually call us on the phone and say, okay, hey, I don't know how this works, or I have a question about this or that. We'd rather have a two-way dialogue at any time. This doesn't have to be all official council meeting business. So if you have questions, call any of us councilmen. Drop us an email to call you back, whatever it is. We want to hear it. We want your input. You know, that, I think that's, works a lot better than just one-way conversation. It's, it's, it's a lot more difficult. So we're, we're here to be reached. We wanted to drop this information. We wanted it to be absorbed. We weren't going to vote on something and then hand it out. We wanted all the details out there. We're not hiding anything. It's, the entire settlement was literally dropped into this. And I know, I apologize, it's a lot of information, but we wanted it all, all there for everyone to see. One last item I'd missed for the residents of Green Acres, if you're paying attention. Um, it was brought to my attention by residents there. They were concerned about, um, Green Acres is where Jason has that arrow now. So that's adjacent to part of that, the upper left corner from that red line up or from the Barman Farm up, uh, no, further down, but it's, I guess it's inconsequential. So there's about three or four lots of Green Acres, and those are huge lots that abut the, um, East Gates. So those residents were worried about all these new homes and that the kids could just walk right through their yards in Green Acres and to cut places. So I did speak to Mr. Lawton today, and he agreed that if the, if the agreements were to be approved and it was substantially unchanged from what we currently have, that he would foot the bill for what would probably be about a $40,000 fence, because it's like a quarter mile uh, to, to appease those residents in Green Acres and preserve some of their privacy, uh, from what they have right now. So currently they don't have any fences. It's all open land out there. So he did agree to do that. So anybody from Green Acres listening, uh, but, but again, the stipulation is obviously the deal would have to be made and it would have to be substantially, you know, what we have here today, so.
Okay. So we do have one comment coming from the, uh, audience. Nick, if you could step forward and give us your name and address.
My name is Nick Cernercrack. Uh, address is 10656 Bell Street in Crown Point. It's part of the Green Acres subdivision. Uh, first, I want to thank everyone for working hard on this. Obviously, it's been a challenge especially for us with respect to property values. Uh, the density calculation, which I'll, I'll ask at the end, that we did roughly in that subdivision is approximately 2.8, I saw 2.3 up here. On the Green Acres subdivision, it's 0.8. It's a pretty considerable difference as far as for property values. Um, I appreciate the consideration. I've talked with a couple of neighbors, uh, myself being one of them and has the biggest lot because it's all grass. I have no trees back there, limited trees. So I would see everybody's backyard in this subdivision in Gates East. A privacy fence going up, very similar to the, what's going, what's currently in Greystone would be very welcomed by the neighbors. At least it would provide somewhat of a barrier to hopefully preserve some of our property values if we have to sell it in our golden years. The lot size, I know I heard 60 by 140?
Yeah, an increase from the 43 foot and 53 foot that were slated to go there.
Right, so that's the size of each lot, right?
Uh, the, the minimum, uh, width is 60, yes.
Okay, and then the depth is 140?
140 with, with an exception on probably five or six lots out of the whole subdivision where they're slightly shorter than 140 because they're odd sized lots, odd, odd places.
It's with 8,400 square feet for that lot size, it puts 5.1 homes per acre. But, butted up against the US, which are, there's every single home in that subdivision is one home per one acre. So the density value is considerably higher now butted up against to the Green Acres states. Please consider the privacy fence similar that's there to in the Greystone subdivision that's here, just off Calumet. They, at the back end of that property, they run a privacy fence that's a straight line. It does not impede any of the, uh, homes' backyards. In fact, none of the homes' backyards have fences other than that straight line privacy fence. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
So this project, uh, I want to answer a little bit of, of what, um, Nick just presented. So this project has varied in the number of units. The number of units was never stipulated by the, um, previous agreement. And it was simply a minimum square foot lot size, which turned out to be not what was expected, I guess I'll say, um, in that agreement that was crafted in 2019. Because you could do a lot of things with a minimum lot size. You can make a bunch of tiny lots and then just one big lot to compensate and... So the density at one point this year was up to 688 units over 220 acres. And if you do the math, it was 3.12 per acre, what they call global density. Right now, we're very close, I would say we're pretty close to the 600 mark, but we were kicking numbers around when we were... I remember the final step was getting the, we got the 43s eliminated, then we had the 53 foot wide lots eliminated. And eliminating the 53, eliminating the 43s, dropped about 40 units. Eliminating the, uh, 53s completely dropped like another 13 units or so. We, we're in the very low 600s at this point. So I would do a calculation of approximately 605 divided by 220, and we're at about 2.75 per acre, still more dense than the original gates of St. John at 2.3. Still denser than I would like to see on any new development in St. John, uh, in general. And, uh, but, but like again, unfortunately, we didn't have a clean slate, so we're trying to move the needle as far as we can move it. And that center portion is unmovable because it was approved before we got to it. So 385 or 386, I think, homes. You know, they're already building over there. We can't, can't undo that with any, any legal action.
That's part of the 600, correct?
That's part of the 600. So 380 something of the 600 is already done. So at least we're making it so the additional 111 acres has a better minimum lot width. And also the, the, the no vinyl siding across the whole development. That was one thing that was able to be changed. So there is a no vinyl siding requirement on all 600 homes, uh, in that development now.
So if you had 605 and you took out 380, that leaves 220, maybe 225?
Mm-hmm, that's all we could really have an effect on, about 220.
And that's on 108 acres?
On 111.
111.
Mm-hmm. There's a lot more green space in the annexed area because you have the Nipco and some weird parcels that you really can't quite fit things into. Yeah, so it'd be about 220 on 111. So it ends up that portion to be about two units per acre on the 111 portion. The denser part is a little north of you, Nick. It's that center part that's being built is the super dense part for sure.
Okay. So the 380, we don't have any control over anyway.
Can't do anything with the 380 something. That was done before we, uh...
So the agreement that we're looking at basically is looking at two, two units per acre.
Right.
Okay. That's better than I thought, okay. Um, anybody else in the public to make a comment?
There's one gentleman who just signed in.
Did you have a comment on this or for a public comment later?
Nothing yet.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for asking.
Okay. So I guess if that's all we've got, I would encourage, um, the residents of town, um, pick up this document if you wish, um, review it, look at the settlement and review it. Give us some feedback. We really want to see, yeah, both the negatives and the positives. There might be some better ideas that come out of this. I think Paul, um, has done a great job negotiating this thing. So again, I would like to thank Paul for putting this work together.
And Wayne?
I'd like...
I, I put the presentation together.
I'm getting there.
Yeah.
And I'd like to thank Wayne because Wayne really initiated the whole, um, you know, start the negotiation process. So, um, you know, without, without Wayne's push there, this would have never gotten to this point. So I'd like to thank both of you guys for that.
And I would like to say something if you don't mind. I'd like to thank John Lawton, Jonathan Lawton, his son, um, Tim Kuiper, their attorney, our attorney, Dave Westlin, and Paul for moving this along. We had, uh, back in September, like Paul said, we could just sit and, and do nothing, but we said, hey, let's start talking. It's, uh, talk is better than going to court. So I think everything's working out rather well. It's better than what it was. Um, so I thank Paul, Dave Westlin, and John Lawton, John, Jonathan Lawton, uh, and, uh, Tim Kuiper. But, uh, thanks for getting together and, uh, as I would say, smoking the peace pipe.
Yeah, and that's another part that really didn't get covered in the settlement is all the attorney fees that we're going to save by settling this rather than arguing and fighting this in court and appeals court and every other court that it's going to go to, so. And I think we've really tried to take care of as much, yeah, as many, try to eliminate as many legal issues as possible. And I think this will be a big chunk of that done as well. So, um, again, just would like to revalue your comments, um, and suggestions on this settlement.
This PowerPoint presentation will be available on the town website. It'll be under the Town Council Meeting Minutes area.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
I do have one more comment I missed. Um, it was a reference to the fire station. Could you please go back to the, it was on the last slides that had the words Heartland Park Expans, Park Expansion, so? There it is. You may notice there's a little arrow on the bottom. So if we were to choose option two, which settles the 40 acres and gets the room for the fields, um, that Heartland Park, or that 40 acres is within that blue circle I drew in the center of town. It, that is a lot closer to the center of town than the Gates, uh, location. And it's actually a little shifted west, like what the fire service people keep telling, I'm not a fire service guy, but you guys keep saying it needs to be west of 41. So, um, that, that creek is about the center of town and then Heartland is... Uh, you gotta zoom out a little bit probably. Yeah, so just south that, those three parcels right there. So there's actually a parcel right on 109th that could be used where the, the fire trucks could literally pull out on 109th and zip either way, either west towards U. Corner or east under the tracks or east to 41.
Yeah, if they gotta go north, they can go north up White Oak, north up 41.
Yep. So it's, uh, so we would have town land if we took option two to put a fire station directly on, um, on 109th. In fact, the southwest corner of that property is, has an isolated parcel that's surrounded by wetland that would provide for like a massive fire station and probably a little bit more stuff too. You could probably put an extra salt bar in there. There's so much room. So, and it's kind of cut off from the rest of the parcel. So just something to consider, option two, uh, solves the problem of needing land for a, for a fire station. You have it and you have it in a more ideal situation and it's paid for, so.
Okay. If we have nothing else, we will move on, um, to item number six. Would, uh, any comments, Mr. Westlin, before we move on?
No.
I know you've spent some time on this as well, so.
No, I would just tell you that we're kind of at a point, you know, with the Court of Appeals decision pending and the 40 acre parcel going to court that we, you know, the timeline you've laid out is a good timeline to kind of make a decision one way or another.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then we'll go on to item number six, which is public comment. Um, I did not receive any email comments prior to the meeting. We had two people sign up for public comment. Nick, you made your comment, so you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, and Mike, you signed up when you came in. Did you have anything that you wanted to comment on before we, uh?
Going at this time. Thank you for asking.
Okay. All right, so we will close public comment. Uh, reports and correspondence, anything, Mike?
No, I don't have anything.
Wayne?
Nothing.
Paul?
Just want to mention the, um, signal at 97th and 41 was recently revised by, um, Endot. And part of that revision was supposed to add new lane configuration on the west side of 41. So somehow the contractors must add some kind of a mix-up. I really can't determine what happened, but I got ahold of Endot this morning. So there, there were some residents complaining about the intersection wasn't working right, and they're right because the, the striping wasn't there to line your cars upright, um, and, and creating some hazards. So I think Endot was out there today and put some temporary solutions in place. I saw some cones out there. They were going to revise that light timing, but, uh, we're aware of that. I should say Endot's aware of it. Endot controls it, but I, I made sure they were, they were aware of it and they're working on it. So, and they'll get the new striping down, which should improve the visibility and alignment in that intersection.
Okay. Brian, anything?
No, sir.
All right. Mr. Westlin, anything to add?
No.
Then I will look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Brian, support for that?
Second.
I'll second.
This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.